We'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Ms. Nazario.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Sturgill here. Mr. Williams.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of visitors. We have our first hearing of the public. We have a first hearing of the public. Hearing saying none. Approval of the minutes from our meeting on January 13th and our organizational meeting on January 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Nazario.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Sturgill.
Yes.
Motion carries. Number seven, old business, and I think we have to hear from our legal on old business.
Thank you. To the chair, to members of the board. In the last board meeting, there was a designation by the board as to who it was that would act as board counsel. And at the time, I did not raise any issues, but I have had an opportunity to think about the issues that might be attendant or related to selection of different lawyers as board counsel. As you know by statute, the law director's office is required to provide its services to the board if the board so elects. And to do so without compensation, that's the law that exists today. And we have, I think, met that challenge and continue to provide our services to you without there being any form of consideration monetarily paid to the City of Lorain for our services. Now differently, when you hire outside counsel, of course, that doesn't come for free, and money has to be paid. And that issue is not lost on me. And as we, as the board acted in this last meeting, you had both the law director appointed to act on your behalf as well as private outside counsel. In addition to that, we have a pending lawsuit, as you are well aware, against the former CEO, against the CEO of the district. And so with the board pitting itself against the district and its CEO, there is, could be an inherent conflict to the same lawyers representing both sides of the table. In this case, Mr. Giardini representing the district, and perhaps now a substitute CEO, that hasn't yet been addressed by the court, as well as representing the board. And so these two things that we have confronting us, the fact that you have an outside counsel acting on your behalf at times who is paid, the law director acting on your behalf at times who provides those services without compensation, and a potential conflict between that same outside counsel and the board as regards the current pending litigation, I have had opportunity to speak to your board president and to Mr. Giardini about avoiding any appearance of impropriety that might result from or arise from those two circumstances. And I'm suggesting to you that we clarify the relationship that Mr. Giardini will have with this district, that my office will have with the board, and how we might proceed in the future in that pending litigation. Anthony is not here tonight, but I have had an opportunity over the past several days to speak to him about this issue, and he and I are in agreement, and I have authority to speak on his behalf about how he and I feel about this. And in addition to that, I have spoken with my assistant, Mallory Santiago, about the issue, and I think she agrees that the matter needs to be clarified. So what I'm asking the board to consider is that moving forward, it be clear and made a matter of record that the law director's office will act as board counsel. That it's our understanding, and of course, these choices are left to someone else, in this case, your district CEO, as to who might act as district counsel from time to time. The statute that regards my office, the law director's office, requires me to act on behalf of the board, it does not require me to act on behalf of the district. And as you know from the prior CEO's actions, they had independent outside counsel at the district level. And certainly, it could very well be, based upon a minute substitute House Bill 70, that the CEO, Mr. Ring, has his own authority to contract with outside counsel. We're not here to talk about that so much tonight. But I don't want there to be any confusion out in the public, I don't want there to be any confusion with the board as to what the law director's responsibilities are. And I think by creating a outside counsel who is paid and an inside counsel, the law director who's not paid for their services, issues could arise. Mr. Giardini agrees. So what I'm asking the board to consider as a matter of old business is a motion or a resolution that would establish the law director as your board counsel. And to also say that it's your understanding that Mr. Giardini, if Mr. Ring so desires, will act as district counsel. Now, there may be times when we collaborate, I'm sure there will be, I'm sure that there will be instances where the district and the board are in the same position as regards a legal matter, so I could foresee Mr. Giardini's office and my office being on the same side of a issue. But as an example, even now, theoretically, the district is on one side of the issue regarding the school treasurer, and the board is on the other. And for that reason, it would be impossible for Mr. Giardini to sit on both sides of the table, as it would be for me as the law director. So going forward, to avoid any of that confusion, to be very sure that the board understands that our services are provided for free, and to be sure that we know that we're required to act on your behalf, and that spending money for outside counsel should be avoided unless absolutely necessary on your part, I think a motion or a resolution to the effect that the law director will act as board counsel, your understanding is Mr. Giardini would be hired as district counsel if Mr. Ring so desires, and that if we need, if the board needs outside counsel, the board will address the issue when the issue is confronted and make a decision at that time. Chair, do we need to rescind our previous resolution? Before we do that, or what's the... Well, I think rescission is probably the correct thing to do, absolutely the correct thing to do. And then a new motion hiring, not hiring, but appointing us as board counsel would be the next motion for you to consider.
Did you create any language pertaining to that at all, or did we just need a similar resolution?
We didn't create language regarding the rescission of the prior motion, but I think we can take that up first.
Okay.
So I would motion that we rescind our resolution at the organizational meeting to instate Mr. Giardini as our legal counsel.
Second.
No support? Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Nazario.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill, yes.
And I would make a motion that we officially engage the, appoint the law director's office, the City of Lorain, to be our general counsel for the board.
Okay. Motion and secondment?
Okay.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Nazario.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill, yes.
Thank you. Is there anything further?
Thank you.
Nothing further than that?
Nothing.
Nothing further? Report recommendations of the treasurer? None? You have anything, Mr. Treasurer, pro temp?
No. Not today.
A report and recommendations of our CEO. Mr. Ring?
First of all, normally, we're required to share the next year's school calendar for a 30-day period before adoption. Since I currently have that power, and am the only one with the power, to do that adoption, I thought it would be wise that before I proceeded with that, is to, as normally would happen, share that draft of a calendar with you. So, board members, you all have a copy of the 2021 calendar. For those of you in the public, on the corner right behind Courtney over there, is the proposed draft calendar, which we will be moving ahead with, to let you know why the Teachers Association has approved this contract. They were part of the discussion to develop it, as well as the Administrators Association, as well as myself and some other people in the central office. So, based on that, I will tell you that all minimum requirements in terms of meeting the number of hours required by the State of Ohio is met by this and well exceeded by this calendar. To give you a little bit of a comparison to last year, this calendar reflects, I believe it is, an additional five or six days of teacher-pupil contact time. For last year, there were a lot more days that were used for professional development, used in the 184-day contract for the teachers. We have pulled some of those aside. I feel strongly that in a district that is working on their achievement, as particularly as this one is, and really any school district, the time on task is essential. And the time that we have students sitting with teachers, I think that's as important as anything that we do. So having said that, there are fewer professional development days in this calendar, there's still some there. We had a lot of discussion and feel confident that some of those, the number of days, are appropriate. Some of the professional development days identified on here, too in particular, will be teacher-driven days, which the idea is that teachers, for instance, third-grade teachers across the district, could come together and develop the conversation around their practices. We call that horizontal curriculum meetings. Currently, I don't think there's a lot of that going on, the teachers have said that that's as valuable as anything. Could also be done vertically, with vertical conversation between our teachers, vertical IMING, you know, between fifth and sixth grade. Probably rarely, because we have fifth-grade teachers at the elementary level, sixth grade, of course, at middle school, we probably don't have enough discussion vertically between those. So that's the idea of the two dates that you'll see there on the calendar that are driven really by the teachers. So we want to give them plenty of opportunities to talk. Having said that, the first day of school for the children would be on the 20th of August, and then we would finish up on the 27th, and then teachers would finish up on the 28th. We're staying with the idea of the first semester being completed by Christmas break, and meets all the requirements required by the Ohio Department of Education and the State of Ohio in terms of a school calendar. In 30 days, I will adopt this calendar, based on any people in the public, if they want to shoot me an email with any concerns they may have. But I think this is the best we can do in terms of satisfying the requirements and being fair with our teaching staff and our students as well. So we look forward to adopting this, and it would be my intent to do so within 30 days. So, having said that, I'll conclude that part of my meeting in terms of my obligation, which I personally feel I have an obligation to share that with you. The second thing is more directly a board matter. You have a horizontal sheet there that has a table of changes to the policy manual per OSBA recommendations. We talked a little bit about this two weeks ago at our meeting. These are very insignificant, but I want to share with the board that it is my intent at my next approval meeting, where I'm approving items that come before me, is to approve these items in terms of changes to the board policy. Board, I would ask you to look these over. If you have any questions, please give me a call, we can sit down or talk on the phone about any of these that you have questions about. Again, these are all by OSBA recommendation, just to keep us in alignment with the changes that have been made at the federal and the state level in terms of legislation that has been passed, and it would be my intention to approve these. Moving forward, as I have conversations with Heidi about the changes that are forthcoming from OSBA, I would appreciate the opportunity to speak with the two of you that sit on the policy committee, where we can do a brief review of what will be my recommendations, and I do want your input. I care very much about the board and how they feel on these matters, but obviously, they're still under my purview to approve and so forth as the CEO. But I'm telling you that I want your input on these. So if any of you have any concerns about any of these, please contact me directly. And assuming that I don't hear any, or that we don't need to make any major changes, I will move ahead with approval probably in a week or so, the next time that I sit down and do approval of agenda items. Moving ahead real quickly to those items I have recently approved, as recently as last Friday. My report was forwarded to you. If you have any concerns, please let me know. But such things really as approval of a contract with the Metro Parks for Professor Wilde to come in. He does a traveling show to all of our ten elementary schools, be an assembly for them, and this is paid through Nordson, dollars that we receive from the Nordson Scholarship Fund. So we appreciate their support, their tremendous, tremendous help as we seek to do better things for our kids. We did have some extra compensation that went to our administrators that are covering in our two buildings that currently do not have a principal, that being Frank Jacinto, as well as Palm. We have some people that are kind of doing double duty, if you think it that way. So, and until we replace those positions, we want to be fair with those administrators that have taken on double duty. So we've given a modest stipend to those people to help them. In one building, the two deans are covering it, they will split $125 a day. And in the other building, Mrs. Lewis, one of our other principals, is helping out there, and she will be compensated the full 125-day to help with that building. Both positions are currently posted, accepting applications, that posting ends today. So we'll be moving forward with doing, receiving applications and doing interviews in the real near future for both of those buildings. If we don't have, and that was an internal posting, if we don't have internal people that we're confident can go ahead and fill those positions, if needed, we'll post these things externally and receive applications from outside. But the first point, the first move I wanted to do was give our administrators internally the opportunity to apply for these positions. Faculty members from both buildings will sit on the selection committees, as well as myself, I will personally be involved with those, as well as some other people in the administrative staff. We have an approval of a renewal contract with Blackboard Incorporated, which is our robo-call. We get a robo-call when we want to send out a call to all of you in case there's an emergency or something you need to be alerted to. That's an important piece to have as we move forward. We'll continue that with Blackboard Incorporated. We also approved a $96,800 contract, was the low bid to current surfaces, to do a resurfacing on the running track at the high school. So we'll be moving ahead with that as the low bid there. We also approved a contract with Effective Leadership Academy to provide fifth-grade students at Garfield with social economic development, and the program will be paid for through NORD and Nordson Foundation, again, giving us great support there. We have a musical theater project that's coming into Garfield that I have approved. We've approved our continued membership with the Ohio High School Athletic Association, which we always do, and important that we're a member of that organization. We have also a licensing, $2,495 with cloud licensing, with government connection for our administration. We are renewing a contract with Rutzel and Andres to assist the Ohio Midsize Urban Districts Leadership Collaborative, was requested by the board in the amount of $5,000, and that has been approved, as well as membership for our attorneys, Ohio Council of School Board Attorneys, and an affiliate of the Ohio School Boards Association, in the amount of $315, so that we can affiliate memberships with those, again, at the request of the board. Happy to support all those requests. That concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions, any discussion?
I did have one question with regards to the policy pieces. I'm not sure where we left off at, but at one time, I know Heidi was working with us, and we're trying to create a schedule by which we review policies. As we can see, some of these last reviewed or approved were 2013. But we were trying to get on the schedule so that we would be able to get through our entire policy manual, if not one-year, two-year period of time. Would you put that in?
We did get through it. That's why, that's why I questioned those dates, I questioned those dates on there, because around between, between 13 and 16, I pushed it really hard to get it done. And we had, we had a lot of policy meetings, and, you know, to my knowledge, we covered the whole book and got it done, and we was ready to start over. But, I mean, to go back, to go back to 13...
Well, my guess is those ones that are listed in 13, there were no changes. Those would only reflect the changes made, not your review. I'm sure most of the policies you reviewed and made no changes to. So the last time, for instance, that first one there, the last time there was actually a change was 13, didn't mean you guys didn't review it.
Okay.
But there were no changes made.
Okay.
You approved it, and it went ahead.
Okay.
So that's the last time, those dates would be the last time the board formally made a change on those policies.
And I was just stating that because I know for the last two, three years, we've not reviewed any policies. So, we're kind of maybe out of compliance with our own rules regarding that because of the changes in how they were posted. At one time, what were you, what were we using? Board docs, in which they were supposedly, they were there, they existed, we could search them via, you know, some kind of search words and different things like that. So I don't know the status of that, but if you could possibly check into that with Heidi, just to find out where we are, she has a better idea of where we are than we do.
Yep. We've been talking about that, Tim. And we are in the process of updating the online through Board Docs, that document that you're talking about. So give us another week or two.
No problem, no rush.
And, yep, yep. And all of those things that have been changed since whenever back, and I think it's really only been not updated for the, I'm guessing what I'm hearing about the last year and a half, where there have been some changes made that were made by the CEO that maybe didn't make it to that Board Docs document that you're talking about. Because I feel strongly, you know, the board policy needs to be available to the public and to all of you. So we're working on that. We're fine-tuning our process, and we have one of our assistants, administrative assistants that is working on that with Heidi's help, with my help. We just had a meeting about that, and I feel strongly that we'll have everything cleared up and up to date, so that all of you can refer to board policy whenever you need to. I would hope till, by the next meeting, I'll be able to give you an update. I would hope it'd be done by then. So, we're on top of it. Working on it.
Any further?
Yes. Mr. Ring, I would like to say, I am watching your organizational challenge, and it is amazing the things that you have accomplished so far. And I want to thank you. It is amazing just to see what you have accomplished so far. And it's very odd, after all this time, to see a CEO sitting at the table with us.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
And it's just a pleasure.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, new business. Does anyone have anything on new business? None. No committee reports, or second hearing of the public?
Hi. My name's Jessica Castro, I'm a teacher at Palm, and as you've already mentioned, we have a job posting for a principal at Palm. And I'm wondering if teachers are going to be a part of the interview process, and if that is going to be the case, at what time, or what's the timeframe for us being notified? And what, like, procedure would that kind of be?
As I mentioned, intend to have two teachers on the interview committee. I understand that there may be more than two of you that may want to be a part of that, and I would just ask that, as a faculty, you come together and, you know, share amongst each other, those of you that might want to be a part of that, and that the faculty support two people to come and be a part of that. That's, I think that's the best way to get, let you guys have that discussion and do that. I would hope, again, it depends on how many applications we've had and so forth, I would hope by the end of the week, we should be reaching out, so if the faculty at Palm could come together, and Jacinto as well, if any of you are tied there, could come together and identify two people who would be willing to serve on, on the committee. We'll try to probably do it during school, and if we need to cover with a sub, we'll certainly willing to be that. We appreciate your willingness to be a part of that conversation, and we'll move forward that soon. My goal is to get people in both of those positions as quickly as possible, but we don't want to make a mistake. We want to be thorough in our process and what we do there. You know, part of it would probably be reaching out to some of you with some ideas in terms of questions for the interview process, some things like that. I'll appreciate some feedback there as we work to put the protocol together for the interview process. So we'll be reaching out to you there, and I hope soon, you know, maybe as early as end of this week.
Okay. And I have one other comment. The Chronicle article that came out last week regarding the extended contracts that were given in May to the chiefs, is there any recourse there at all that, are you in conversations, are legal things being done behind the scenes?
You take that one.
So, that is everybody's concern.
Yes.
And legalists prepared to talk with us in our executive session about some of our contracts. I don't know if you had anything to add, but we'll be going into executive session to discuss legal and contracts at the end of this meeting.
That's great to hear. And here's a little suggestion, just, you know, we're hurting in our buildings for subs. On the daily, kids are getting divided up, and four kids are going here, and four kids are going there, and it is interrupting the learning process. These kids are not receiving the education that they are entitled to. Maybe that could be a job for somebody that is in an administration position that isn't super busy. Maybe they could come and sub in the buildings.
Anyone else from the public?
Hello, Barbie Washington. I would like to thank Mr. Ring for getting back to us on the public records request. I've started to receive those, and I appreciate that. I would also like to say that I had some issue with my daughter's transcript, it was a personal case, and we've worked on that. But getting her updated transcript, I've noticed that it said she missed 12 days last year, and I knew that that wasn't the case. So I asked for a printout of her date's absent, and, you know, it's been a whole year, but I know two of those dates for sure, that she was at school, that like the one day an actual employee took her to school for me. My concern is not so much my daughter, I've talked to the counselors, she's not, those are the only days she has missed in high school, but the other kids that might be punished or parents held accountable for days that are marked absent on their transcript or records.
I have a, I have a comment on her comment. And, Mr. Ring, it's about one of the slides that you showed showing our attendance in very last place. And, I mean, I'll bet that people said this table got calls that their child wasn't in school. My daughter called me, and she says, Dad, they're calling me again, telling me my granddaughter isn't in school. They all have cell phones, so you can locate them. You know, I mean, we knew that she was in school, and yet we were getting calls, and it was because of the scholarship program. There is problems with it. And when we went down to OSBA, I stopped in and talked to the lady at scholarship, and she says, you really need to have us in there, there's a problem with it, with scholarship going on with Power School. She says they're not talking to each other certain, you know? So, I just wondered about your data or our data. I mean, if it could be really skewed because, you know, because of something like that. I mean, how many, how many kids, how many kids got days on there? I mean, how many, how many kids, how many kids got days on there that weren't there? And we reported it that way. And so that's the way our data comes out and it's not true data.
I think you had some, when Lindsay was in school, you had some issues with being called.
I mean, General Johnny last year, I was getting, they were on field trips. I was getting calls that they were absent. I mean, I dropped her off at school and she went on a field trip. And so there were numerous calls for both of them.
And we've discussed it privately. So, I mean, there's obviously been some irregularities that we know about. And we were just trying to make sure that, you know, I would hope that as parents review, and hopefully they're reviewing their kids' transcripts and those things. If they have a question, please call the district. Don't just accept that this is what it is.
Absolutely.
And if someone tells you there's nothing that can be done about it, don't accept that either. So I think where we can make things right, we make them right. And, you know, because again, it could affect scholarships. It could have, it obviously affects their grades, attendance. We've had some children who are not in our district because of a violation of an attendance policy that I think is effective for open enrolled students. So we just want to make sure that we're not inappropriately, yeah. So I think Mr. Ring's aware of that. Maybe if possible, because it's not something you can figure out now, we can get an update on that. And really, the big question is, is the thing working right now? So there's one thing, looking at what happened in the past, but are our records today, is that system tracking properly?
I just, I just wanted you to know that I'm not talking one time. I'm talking multiple times on this during the year.
Just to add one other thing to tie into the attendance. I know attendance is a huge barrier, huge to the kids' learning. I don't feel that we're doing a lot as a district to encourage kids to come to school, maybe to hold parents accountable or whatever we need to do. I know my daughter got perfect attendance for the second, or first semester in high school and they just put a letter on the, put a note on her lacquer, which, you know, she was fine with, but like, are we really doing something to celebrate kids that are doing good and to encourage kids that aren't doing so well?
Well, I know at the elementary level, because I've been visiting all those buildings and sometimes I'm there for announcements and you'll hear the principal or whoever come over the announcements and recognize the kids that, you know, had 100% attendance or whatever. That's all important. I think it's great to recognize those kids and I agree with you. You know, we need to pat the ones on the back that are there and encourage the ones that aren't coming, for sure.
Hello, Jay Pickering, President of Lorraine Education Association, represent teachers. As you were talking about this attendance issue, and it's most important for the kids because this is a record that takes, you know, that goes along with them, especially when they're trying to get things and scholarships. But keep in mind too, that a good portion of the teachers' evaluation system, their student growth measures now are related to this faulty attendance system. And many of them, their evaluation will be lowered because of this system that is, especially at the high school, not working well.
Thank you. Anything else from the public?
I have something to say about rewarding the students. I can't remember if it was in the early 2000s, we had adopter schools, businesses adopted the school, a school. And I kind of hope that maybe we could try to go back in the community and into the businesses and have that done. Because I know at that time, I was working at Cole Myers in South Lorraine and we adopted Lowell Academy. And we had a great relationship with Lowell. We were involved with their science fair where we went in and did judging for them and gave ribbons. We worked with them with their, during literacy month or week or whatever. And us employees, we went in and read books to the children. And then we had them, the older kids, sixth graders, fill out job applications. And then we got, and we had them transported to Cole Myers and we set the kids up into accounting, shipping and receiving, making bandsaw blades, doing silk screening, doing trophies. And we thought it was a great experience for the kids to fill out the job applications, to see what they would really like to do. And then at the end of the year, what we did is we honored the kids with the perfect attendance. We honored the kids with straight A's. We honored the kids on the honor roll. And we, we didn't do like all that much. I mean, one group got hats with saying what they were. Another group of kids, we went to Friendly's and bought them the Sundays. And we said what day we were going and we bought them all Sunday. Oh gee, it cost us a couple hundred dollars. I mean, I think that, I would really like to see that program brought back. And then you have a good community relationship with your businesses, your local businesses. So I just wanted to say, I do agree that we should acknowledge our students that way. Then also, one more thing, is I do the food pantry for the schools. I'm like co-coordinator. And I just want to say that I'd like to thank all the staff that helps us at South U Middle, Longfellow Middle, and General Johnny Wilson Middle. And not only them, but the students that help. We have a large amount of students that come out and help us. And to me, that's, you know, teaching them so much about giving back to the community. And you should see the pride that they have in helping the elderly carry out all those big boxes to the cars. And really, I'd like to see, if not the school system, the school board acknowledge the staff that helps and also the students. I think we should do something for them. I know I myself do something for the students, but I think it probably would mean more if it came from the schools. So thanks.
Thanks. I'll say thank you for all you do. And I agree with you, there's a little, so this has been an interesting couple of years that we've been in, but we used to really acknowledge a lot of the great things that we did in the community for our kids right here at this board meeting. And we intend to get back to that very soon. Thank you for that. Thank you. Nothing else from the public? We do need to go into an executive session to talk about employment and legal. What are these numbers on there?
A1.
A1 and?
A7.
A2 and C. Thank you. I know you're very good. Thank you for that. So I need a motion for executive session. Not sure when we come out, guys, if we're going to be doing any further business. We will see how things go in executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
Support?
Roll call?
Mrs. Ariel?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill, yes.
We'll be back as soon as we can. Thank you.
In due speed, I'll come back. When is our next meeting?
The, when's our next meeting?
February 10th.
February 10th, 5 o'clock right here.
A motion to come out of executive session.
Support, anyone?
Any support?
Support.
Roll call.
Mrs. Ariel?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Sturgill, yes.
We are back in. Is there any additional information coming out of executive session?
I think based on our conversation, we appreciate, I appreciate, I think we all appreciate the information provided to us by our legal counsel.
Yes.
And based on that information, I would suggest that we, again, it's just a recommendation that our legal counsel, based on their findings around our significant challenges with some of those provisions in those contracts, i.e. golden parachutes, that they kind of advance the discussion that we had among the legal counsel with the district and the CEO to pursue what our options might be legally. But again, I felt very good about what the legal counsel, I guess I would say, suggested to us, discussed with us, things that were, there's some potential challenges. And I appreciated that they had some case that they looked at and were able to kind of give us a really good understanding of some of the things that are written in the contract as it relates to public policy. And so I don't know if there's any objection, but I think that conversation would be the next appropriate place between our legal counsel, the CEO, and the district's counsel.
Very good.
So I don't know what we need to do, I think, except, I don't know if there's a recommendation we need to do or if it's just that you hear where we're coming from.
Yes. I think I'll advance that with our legal people to get in touch with Mr. Ring and his legal people.
And I think for the public to understand that we can't discuss what was in our executive session, but they know it was around those contract issues. And so we want them to know that we are doing our due diligence and looking out for the resources of this district and protecting those things, so, and the integrity of the district. So I appreciate the comments even made by Mr. Ring in terms of how there's a lot of, a lot of stuff, you know, with the $3 million deficit pending, looming, and a lot of contracts are up in the air and we don't know. So, and I think it's important that the district teachers and employees know that we're not just treading water, that people are making decisions, they're doing their due diligence, and this isn't something that we do haphazardly. And so again, I appreciate Mr. Ring and legal counsel for their work.
Thank you. Is there any additional?
If I could add one thing. Mistakenly, I put one of my parent contact sessions against the next board meeting. It starts at 6 o'clock, the last one that I'm having. I believe that one said Johnny, Johnny, General Johnny Wilson. So I will try to make the board meeting, the next board meeting, February 10th. I will try to be here for the first half hour or so, but I've committed to that parent conference or the parent outreach. So I'll be leaving the board meeting early and moving to that. I wanted to inform you of that.
And I plan to be leaving with you because I'd like to be there to support that. So we will be.
Where is that? Where's that at?
That one is at General Johnny.
Is it possible that we could maybe look at finding a room in General Johnny?
That's great.
Where we could have our meeting? And then we could all hang around for it if we wanted to?
That'd be great. I'll be there too.
Oh, that'd be great.
That'll save us that travel.
True, look into that. And if we change it, we'll do it with our notice. That goes up. Does anyone have any further discussion on anything for the order?
Nope.
From the ADC, members, you guys have anything to add today? Appreciate you all being here as always. Thank you for all you do.
No, I would just like to say it's great to be collaborating with everybody and I agree with.
Two meetings in a row?
I think your concerns are our concerns as well. So I think we're all.
Just nice to work as a team.
Absolutely. And again, I said it last time, it's great to see Mr. Ring here. As Yvonne said, it's a lot on his plate, but we appreciate the efforts and what he's doing. So thank you.
And I've heard a lot of positive feedback on your school visits, so that is a big thing.
Enjoyed it.
Good, good, good. Having nothing further, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Roll call.
Mrs. Ariel?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill, yes.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.